Thank you very much. Here we go. Good evening. This is the June meeting of the Town of Washington Planning Board. Do we take attendance first and pledge? Okay, let's stand for the pledge. Hi. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could we take attendance first for the record? Those physically here call out your name, and then those virtually here call out your name.
Richard Phillips.
Richard Phillips is here.
Nicole Drury.
Nicole.
Eric Alexander.
Eric is here.
Susan Meany.
Ed is here. Who have we online?
Andrew Spence.
Andrew?
Yes, Andrew Spence.
No, there was not anyone else.
No? Just that?
Aaron Werder, hi.
Okay, we have a quorum. First piece of business is, have we read the minutes? And have we comments? Any board member present have comments?
No.
Any board member virtual have comments?
Yes, and I submitted my comments by email to Kristen.
Oh, he must have done it after.
Yeah.
This afternoon. It was very, just to give you a sense, the comments were minor, but I still think worth making, and they were, I think the sentences needed to be completed with respect to the applicants having responsibility for the submissions.
Amen. I think you sent an email to all of us, didn't you, Andrew?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, so we've all seen the Andrew's comments. I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted with Andrew's comments. Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. Next, we have Perkins? Somebody here, anybody here on Perkins?
That's done.
That's done? Why is it on?
Today was supposed to be the official approval.
Possible condition.
Oh.
They were supposed to put something on the map.
Aaron, hold on. Aaron, what do we need to do on Perkins?
Um, I thought you approved at last meeting with conditions.
So why are we here?
I thought it needed official approval today.
Was there a condition subsequent? Is there something the applicant had to do?
Yeah, well, there's conditions on adding a bulk use table to the map, which was pretty basic. And the applicant agreed to do that. I also think the permission to file from the county was required, and that's on them to do before they come back to you to sign the final plat. So I'm not sure if that's happened, but that's the last step they have before you sign.
No, I'm here.
You just know.
Yeah, because that was me.
That was him, but he was not here.
That was me. No, we got final approval. It was conditioned on the bulk and area table and permission to file. And we just have to revise it now.
So.
We were not scheduled to come back for Perkins tonight.
I got you. Are we gonna need a hearing or not?
No.
We're done.
That is done.
So once you submit a map with the amendments on it, we'll be done, right?
You'll sign it.
You'll sign it.
Okay, have I been authorized to sign it by a resolution?
Yes, last month.
I was? Okay, Perkins is done. I bet you're here on Bonneville. Do you want to tell us something, or what are you gonna do?
Yeah, well, I split school for the application.
Yeah.
What went down there?
You said it.
Oh, yeah, they can move.
Now, can you locate this on the Shumpike for me?
Yes, let's go to the area map to locate the project. So this road here is the Shumpike coming across. This is North Mabbittsville Road. And this is Fitch's Corner, right here.
Right.
And then it's Ludlow Road, which turns into the Chute.
This is the Shumpike here?
Yes, that is the Shumpike.
This is Fitch's Corner?
Yeah, right here.
So I see north is up here.
That's true.
So you're dealing with three lots north of the Shumpike, east and west of?
Ludlow Road.
Ludlow Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And are those lots, one of them, is one of those a lot that has the houses on it or not?
No.
No. We did with that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is done. This is all vacant land except for there's a barn right on the corner
Right.
of the Shumpike. My mind, shit.
Yeah. Shed barn.
And it doesn't need setback or anything, but it's grandfathered.
Yeah, it's been there for a long time. They house their farmer equipment. And that's all that it's used for. So what's being proposed is, because there's a highway in the middle of the property, it turns us into a three-lot subdivision. Right now, it's about 248 acres of land, so by subdivision, what we're proposing to do is subdivide out a 47-acre lot on the west side north side of the Shumpike. It's a vacant piece of property, has a pond on it, it has some federal wetlands in the back.
Wet in the back, right?
There's a little stream that comes out of this pond, and there's a narrow bend of federal wetlands that go all the way back. This front field, and to get it halfway back, none of these things in the play.
And Brian, this, sorry, Brian, this is Andrew Spence. Is the plan to develop that 47-acre property or sell it as a housing site?
There is no decision about what to do with it at the moment. As everybody, I'm sure, is aware that Gail Bonneville has been trying to, she's gonna be donating over 1,100 acres of land to, been working with Dutchess Land Conservancy now. And we have done a couple of subdivisions on the remainder of this property, but all that was subdividing out houses that already existed. What she's doing in this case is she's reserving a 47-acre lot. She's not exactly sure what's gonna happen with it at this point in time. So it may end up going, the whole thing with DLC, but when you're giving away 1,100 acres and you're keeping 47 acres, that sounds pretty ridiculous.
And what would be the purpose of subdividing at this time?
Here's the option, listen, they may want to put a house on this. It's 47 acres of land, could it be further subdivided? It could. There's no plan to do that at this point in time. It's got good road drainage, it's got good soil on the property. There's a lot of things good about it. She doesn't know what she wants to do, but she, at this point in time, she wants to reserve 47 acres of land.
So currently before us is a subdivision, without construction, all highway cuts, without wells, water, it's just a lot.
It's just a lot. There's no proposed development going on here. She's gonna decide. Listen, they've had a lot on their plate trying to settle.
Yeah, they stayed, and there's.
The whole estate there, so this is what she's proposing.
Not proposed homes or anything?
Not right now.
There are no existing homes, so nothing.
Yeah, okay.
May I just ask a question, sorry, just for my notes for the town board? Is this part of that, there was a 248 acre piece, the lot, you divided the other, is this part of that 248? The other subdivision did happen in November?
Yes, what we did was the remainder parcel of that subdivision, so we subdivided out the two houses in all the barns on the east side of, we'll say, Fitch's Corner. And that came out a lot, and we left a vacant piece of property that, it goes from one side of the road, crosses over the road, and goes all the way over to Shaw Pond.
So this section has not been before, but planning board? It's not part of that other 248? This is a different?
It's the remainder of what happened with the 27 acres, I can't remember what the number was that we subdivided them.
Yeah.
What do you mean? I lost you there.
Okay. So what we were talking about here, this was Bonneville, the other subdivision we did, was right here in all these buildings here. So when we subdivided this out, that came on its own lot. This.
That was the bad part of it, out the backside.
This lot, we subdivided out before, right here.
Has a house on it.
That has it, a house in, I can think of a personal partner number.
So that this can run over the DLC. We're all part of the land, and then this will go also to the DLC. So they had to cut the house off of it in order to create just a world piece of land to sell to the DLC.
So this is the, I see, this is the part.
She wants to keep this here, so by doing that, and because the highway boundary is here, and this lot technically crosses over the highway, it makes this a three-lot subdivision. So you have 131 acres of vacant land on this side of the road. On the west side of the 47 acres, there's about 117 acres of vacant land over there.
So the 117 acres and the 131 acres are pending sale to the DLC? Yes.
Gifted in the no sale.
And is this, is this Bonneville Lake or this is Bonneville?
That's Bonneville Lake, that's Shaw Pond. It's hard to see the highway.
So the stone wall is the.
Right, we used the natural head rubber to come up with those lots here. It just made perfect sense to do that.
Is this currently one legal lot?
It's one tax lot.
It's one tax lot?
Yes.
So one tax lot divided by Ludlow?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So.
And she wants the piece in the middle, so that's why it ends up being.
Right, being three lots, exactly.
Okay. Okay. Hey, Aaron, what are our issues, if any?
Um, okay, so everyone looked at my memo. It's quite a bit of info in it.
That was a great memo, Aaron, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Some of the questions were answered already. It sounds like there's no plan for for any kind of development on what's called Lot B, correct?
Uh, let's see. Lot C.
Sorry, Lot C, forgive me. Right, so that was one question. You said these are gonna be gifted to the DLC. Would there be a conservation easement? Do we know that yet? I figured we should get a copy if there is one planned.
I don't think there's a DLC proposal before us.
No, there's not. There is, if in fact that it happens with DLC, DLC actually can't have a conservation easement on land that they own. So they would have to appoint another.
Easement holder.
Yeah, thank you. That would actually have the easement on their open space or something like that. Yeah, oh, the whole point is, there is, it's gonna be, from what I understand, and this is still in the works, but restricted from residential development. It's gonna be, they're gonna allow walking paths and public access to this property. If everything goes through, they're gonna talk about it for a while. And they're allowing the farmers to continue their leases on the property and continue farming. So it's it's a wonderful gift for them.
Okay.
So Aaron?
Yes.
The item before us tonight is not part of a conservation donation. It's simply a.
Just a subdivision.
Subdivision of a single tax lot into three lots.
Which is allowed under the current law.
Right. Okay.
Does the CAC have any input on this?
Excuse me, sorry. No, not at the moment, it's just a division of.
Exactly.
They stopped doing any work on it, they have something to say.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, one of my comments, number 10, under referrals, was noting that it's up to the board if they want CAC to look at this. There wasn't any development planned. I figured since DLC would be involved and there would be conservation involved, that they may want to comment. But it's really up to the board.
I think it's premature. I think at the time of construction, we would be going back to conservation, but I don't see that. We even discussed that last night. I don't believe that a lot line generates an issue for Howard. So I think we're okay there. What else have we got, Aaron?
Okay. This is not a minor subdivision, so I think you still need to have a public hearing for this one. I do note that in my number five comment, as Brian alluded to, there was a final map, a previous subdivision from November 2021, which I think was treated as a minor subdivision. I'm not sure, it was before my time, but. Right, so your code specifically says that no lot created through a minor subdivision approval shall be treated as a minor subdivision again until 10 years after final approval. So in my eyes, that means you have to kind of just treat this as a regular subdivision, can't waive the public hearing. So that's what that comment's about.
I have a question about that, Aaron, it's Brian.
Okay.
My take on that part of the code, I thought that this could be treated as a minor subdivision. And because this was the remainder parcel, we subdivided out a lot with existing buildings. That was the subdivided lot. Now, if that came back in for a further subdivision, I would agree with the minor subdivision. But this remainder lot, it wasn't created through a subdivision. This is what was left over from a subdivision. So what we're doing here is, now we're doing a subdivision, and shouldn't they be able to follow minor subdivision rules?
It still was a new lot created, even though it was the remainder.
Okay.
Jeff, what do you think?
Thank God we have Jeff here.
Right, a new lot being created, it's not a lot line adjustment.
Oh, I know that, okay. So no, the public hearing required this, the bottom line. Already.
Okay. So we will be scheduling a public hearing. Aaron, any further stuff?
Yes. Did note that the existing barn on Lot C is non-conforming. It's grandfathered. So I think someone mentioned that already. Number seven, I just mentioned it just because it's worth discussing, but it's probably not an issue. And either way, it's not a bad thing, but Section 60 of the code, specific to open space subdivisions, you know, this technically reads like that because you're creating two lots that are at least five times the minimum lot size, and they're being used for conservation purposes. So does it qualify as an open space subdivision? It could, but in this case, there's really no development plan, so I don't really think it matters what we call it. I just wanted to include that for consideration. Under referrals, I note that this is a, it's within 500 feet of a county highway, the Shumpike, and within agricultural district. However, similar to last month when we had the Perkins project, this doesn't need to go to the county for referral. Same comment is similar to the last subdivision we talked about last month. The Duchess County Health Department, they have to get permission to file before the chairman can sign the final plat. I did note that we're right on the border with Stanford. I thought maybe it would be useful to refer it to the town of Stanford, considering that Bonneville Lake is also in the vicinity here, and that's a critical environmental area. It's not a critical environmental area within your town, but it is within Stanford, and this is right along the border. So again, up to you, but I'm calling out a possible, for informational purposes, referral to the town of Stanford, if you think necessary.
And how is that made, a referral to another town?
Um, just forwarding the application to them with a little note for informational purposes. They're not really an involved agency for any kind of approval.
So would Kristen do that?
Yes. I think you recently got a referral from a media for that Timber Harvest project, right? It's similar to that. You know, they just wanted to let you know.
Brian and Aaron, if we wanted to consider this as an open space subdivision, would the applicant consider that? And what would it mean for us to want to pursue that? If that were what it meant, would we preclude any future development on those lots? Aye, vey.
With everything that's going on with the installation of this property, I would say, listen, I can't speak for Jeff. I would match that because this is so much.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
I think, you can correct me, Jeff, but I think that's normally where you're making a deal to have some preserved space, and you're gonna have a development with it, and that's why you tie it up for the future. That's really another animal that would be inappropriate here.
Thank you.
Okay. That's great, Aaron. I think you covered your points.
Uh, last one was just SECR. This is considered unlisted. It can't be type 2. The applicant did submit the short EAF. They ran the EAF mapper, so did I, just to double-check things. While the site does contain wetlands, it has Shaw Pond, it also abuts Bonneville Lake. There's no development, as we discussed, so there's really a negative declaration looks appropriate to me for this. So we could probably look to prepare one of those for next meeting, assuming the public hearing is open and closed.
Sounds good.
Kristen, will you take care of all the public hearing items then? Letting people know?
I always do, yeah.
Okay, and then are we agreed that we'll send this as a referral to the town of Stanford?
Do we call it a referral or simply a letter advising?
I think you're required to give a joining town notice of a hearing when they're within 500 feet of the town line, so.
Whatever we're required to do, is there a form letter? Can you do a letter to them?
I've done that recently on one of your applications. I would actually notice the town of Stanford of the public hearing.
I see.
That was for Bonneville too.
I see, so it's.
A copy of, hey, we should do this.
They are noticed since they are within 500 feet, and they may wish to attend, is that right?
It's general municipal law, Section 239 N and, or something like that, so you're supposed to get notice of a public hearing to a joint town when the property is within 500 feet of the boundary.
That makes sense.
Okay. Is there a form letter we have that Kristen can send them, or?
I can work with her on one.
Okay.
And then the application goes with it.
And get the, I usually call them, speak to their planning board secretary or whoever, and then.
Sir or Mr. Barker.
Yes, there.
Yeah.
And then I tell, I let them, I get their email, and I let them know that I'm gonna be sending it. But if you think a form, you know, a letter would be better, that's.
Oh, I'll work with Kristen.
Excellent.
So you do need a motion to classify this as, or to declare this to be an unlisted action, SECR. And then you should schedule the public hearing. It's July 5th, and we meet next day.
Oh, that's delightful. Okay, now that we know that nobody's here for the next meeting.
Do we postpone?
Howard?
This is a clarification, I should have introduced it earlier. I don't have, I will apologize, I don't have the full site map that you presented. On the wetlands shown on the map.
Now, the approximate location of the wetlands that's shown on the map.
Okay, approximate location, fine. Okay, that was my question.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not being asked to delineate as part of construction, so.
If something was to happen out in this vicinity, we would go through the motion.
Okay, so I take it we need first a motion, a SECR motion?
Yes, it's a motion just to declare this an unlisted action.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll take a motion to schedule a public hearing for whenever you're gonna meet.
Yeah, well, let's deal with July 5th, because.
I can be here, I can be here.
Oh, geez.
Okay, who's gonna be the chairman on July 5th?
I'll do it.
Nicole, Nicole's the chairman on July 5th. I am not here.
Okay.
Okay. Shall we a motion to give Brian a public hearing on July 5? Motion?
Seconded.
And it's seconded.
Does Brian want a public hearing?
Sorry, Brian.
Brian's driving back for a public hearing, it's on vacation.
Build it into the rate. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Oh, yeah. And Brian, Nicole and the board, we'll see you on July 5.
Thank you, Brian, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Brian Kiernan? Come on up. Brian?
Yes, sir.
Ed Urdison, how are you?
Miss Catalina Fitz, hi, how are you?
Hi.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Okay. Brian, tell us what's going on. We all know Stagecoach.
Yeah. Just the building that's off.
Okay. Right. And office, not retail?
Correct.
Okay. And changes to the parking there? Changes to the lighting there?
Yeah.
And a sign on the exterior of the building?
The only sign is one of those.
On the way, it's right onto the glass.
Correct.
Is it illuminated?
No. Are you gonna want to sign in the future that jumps out a little further on the road?
It really isn't a public interface. This is strictly an office for your own purpose. That's correct.
Exactly.
Yeah, less traffic than when the Stagecoach was there, yeah. People parking right on that busy highway.
And it was already a business use, so we're not changing residential to business, which would be a big issue in Mabbittsville. We're going business to business, right? Jeff, I think you mentioned that we still need a special permit?
Yes, under your code, a professional office in this district requires a special permit and site plan.
Okay.
But it's an approved special use. It's.
No, exactly.
Yeah, clearly listed as something that is permissible.
Right.
But it's a lapsed special use. It's lapsed over a year ago.
The previous special use, the previous.
We're not dealing, the deli would have had its permit.
It would have had a different kind of permit.
But this is a new special permit for a professional use at a building that is current, that has been used commercially.
That's my point.
Right.
That according to the code, special uses, the only use in Mabbittsville is residential. Everything else is by special permits.
Yes.
So special permits lapse.
Yeah, this is a new special permit.
Yes, but to have a new special permit, and it's listed in the usage, by the way.
Right.
So that's not the argument. The argument is, since it's now lapsed, that has reverted back to, all special permits when they lapse, the property reverts back to the district use. It puts it, allow primary use in the district, no matter which zone you're in. So since this has lapsed over a year, maybe two years, the use has reverted back on that property to residential.
I mean, Howard's right, and that's what the code says.
Right, my memo kind of talks about this too.
You need commercial, two-to-one commercial to go into the special permits for commercial. That's my view.
I understand the argument. Where do you think we are, Jeff?
When I look at the zoning code, and I look at the schedule of district regulations, I look at HM, and it just says special uses require a special permit, so the site plan approval and a professional office is listed there.
Yes, that's the argument. The argument is that's a special permit.
There was a special use on the first floor here already. You're not creating a new, different use there. I don't, I think this is okay. I think that the applicant can apply for a special use permit, a special permit, and I think the board will grant it. That's my interpretation.
Okay, I sympathize, if only because we had a long discussion, as I remember, with Stagecoach about the percentage use in Mabbittsville. And we no longer have Jim or, you know, the long memories here. And Al DeBonis would have instructed us. But I feel we're within, I understand the technical argument, Howard. I feel we are within the spirit.
To you, that's just my opinion.
I got you. Trying to, trying to be, you know.
Also because it's a new owner, too. I mean, it's kind of like a reset, I think. I mean, we have a new owner. It's not like it's the old owner who let it lapse and then. Also because it's a new owner, too. I mean, it's a, it's kind of like a reset, I think. I mean, we have a new owner. It's not like it's the old owner who let it lapse and then did something else with it. We have a new owner.
Um, yeah, I think that's a good point.
Into the spirit of.
The spirit of it. I, I, I feel that, uh.
And also the realities of selling a property and the time that these things take, it's not really realistic that this is going to happen in a couple of months and that the new person's use would be.
Exactly. It's not as though.
Ready to be taken on.
Wow.
Yeah.
The pandemic as well.
Pandemic, so many different issues. So Brian, when you purchased this building and you knew that there had been commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor, um, were you aware of the previous special permit or that you needed to get a special permit?
No.
You thought that was just continued, continued?
Commercial space on the first floor and residential on the second floor.
And that's how it was? That's how you purchased it, thinking that continues?
Yeah. I gotcha. I, following uh, Jeff's advice, and I think that the tenor of the board is that we're pleased that uh, Brian is gonna make, you know, give that location some good use for the, for Mabbittsville. And uh, why, why do we?
I think we have a public hearing.
Proceed to a public hearing and a special permit.
I have one question though.
Yes.
If we give this special permit and we've we understand that it doesn't actually meet the parking requirements that you'd normally have. You'd normally have to have more parking spaces than are actually there.
Oh, is that true? Do we need more spaces?
Yeah.
Technically, yes.
So he, I, I noticed that and he can talk about that a little bit because the notes indicate six. But Brian, you indicated that's probably is closer to the eleven that is required. Is that true?
Correct.
Is our number of spaces based on the square footage of the commercial area?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what the, I, I don't know. Is that it?
That's what it says there in one of the memos.
Yes.
Well, you know, I think in particular, we can remember that Stagecoach did a lot of work in the back of that deli. Made as many parking spaces as they could.
Right.
And I think, uh, indeed to meet the parking needs of the deli.
Right.
And I, I, I believe that it's, it's been fully built out and I believe they had to get permits to do cuts to drive in. A lot of work was done to make this parking as as good as it could be to serve the space.
My, my only concern would be that you're using it right now for just your own office needs and it's not going to be a customer-based thing. But let's say the business, this special permit is for professional offices. Lots of other professional offices actually do have uh, uh, public coming in and out and need more parking. So how could we maybe protect against that so that in ten years, the same permit's still active and they've maybe have a new tenant? Maybe you get a tenant in there that.
In other towns, they do exactly that. They say we'll give you a, a special permit, but not for a subtenant if you, this is not a, an approval for a subtenant and have your space. And it's approval for X number of employees on this square footage.
That's the kind of thing I'm a bit concerned about just.
And I, three?
And three people max total.
I mean, if we've got.
What about in the future, say you wanna have five people?
Yeah, if we've got eleven parking spaces, why don't we give a permit for up to five employees in the space?
Mm-hmm.
Can we do that?
Aaron, I have a question. The special use permit is given to the business owner or it's given to the location?
Property owner.
Given to the owner.
Okay. So that if the building were to be sold, the next owner would have to then seek a special permit for whatever the commercial use they would like to do in there? Even if it is the same professional offices?
Uh, yeah, that sounds right. And if they, if they go to buildings for any kind of permit, that would be flagged, I'm sure.
So this isn't giving it, giving it to the location permanently. It's giving it to Brian as the business owner for his particular situation.
Right.
Okay, let me just confirm that. Jeff is, in, in this town, is the, is the permit given to the applicant?
I don't know the answer to that.
Cause I thought when I read the code, when we've had other special permits, that it was thought.
It is to the owner of the business.
Okay, to the owner, okay.
Not the owner of the property. It depends on how you look at it. So we own our business, we own our property. But if we move or that's no longer our resident residence, we lose our special use permit.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think that if you, if you sublease the whole space, I don't think the sublessee has a permit even to run a professional office. Does that sound right, Jeff?
Taking notes. Say that again.
Uh, if Brian subleases the whole space, still owns the property but subleases the commercial first floor, uh, I don't believe that the new sublessee has a permit to operate a professional office in that space. I think he has to come back to us.
I don't know the answer to that. I, I wonder if someone has a special permit for professional offices? They move out and an architect moves in, do they need to get a special permit for the same professional offices?
He still owns it. I don't think so.
So just to clarify, his application says for a specific business. And so that may be the difference. So if it's a generic special use for offices, you know, professional office, that's one thing. But this is for a specific business on this application.
Construction.
That would be.
I would have said that's right. I, 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 I think.
That makes me feel, feel better about, about this, that it's not going to.
I think the permit, I think in other towns, the permit would be viewed as being given to the named business. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, anyhow, that's what our resolution is gonna say.
Yeah, it should say that.
If the resolution is specific.
Yeah, he's good with that.
Yeah, I think if the resolution is specific enough and the actual permit specifies professional office for property management and construction.
So
Okay.
Up to five employees, parking as is, your business, and uh, you're headed for a hearing.
I have one more question.
I have one, I, I think. Go ahead, Mark.
No, no, not at all.
You do actually have in the code, you have section four seventy-eight that states existing violations, that you can't, um, issue a special use permit if it had a violation, which the property's being used already, which means it's in violation.
But no violation was posted.
Right, I thought that Jameson, they didn't cite a violation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think you've been formally cited.
Yeah.
Uh, and the owner has come, come to the town to remedy any situation, so I think we've got a lot of good faith here.
Yeah.
What do you think, Nicole?
I agree.
Okay.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah.
I'm unders, totally understand that, but I think it's, because it's also, if it was the previous owner who went through this whole process with the stage coach and was instructed on all these things and then went and did something else without coming, they'd know better, like, because they went through the process before. But this is a new owner with a different kind of business. Um, but just to say, you guys have also said that, um, people don't do their due diligence with these new applicants coming in without checking. So we do kinda need to stay on the same line for everyone. Yeah, and I know we're changing. I know it's all fluid right now, but it's all got to stay on the same line.
I gotcha. But the la, the last thing we want is to.
And I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But every applicant needs to do their due diligence. You need to know what you can, can't do on a piece of property before you buy it and, and do anything to it.
So I mean.
I also think we need to be careful.
No, I'm saying as well, I'm just, I'm just saying, everyone, you know, uh, that silver, whatever, it was advertised as commercial and it wasn't. So you, you literally have to go and read the code if you're gonna buy and do something in some, who's ever town. I don't, you know, I'm just saying.
I agree.
Yeah.
I just accept it.
Yeah. I, I think in this case, we have good faith, a desire to remedy.
That's the same situation.
Very pleased to have use of the vacant space in Mabbittsville. And there are a lot of equities that say that we ought to proceed with this. What do you think?
This is just one of the little issues, the comment regarding parking.
Oh, so when the stage coach was operating, there was a, uh, daily, there were dangerous situations happening. People were parking right in front of the deli, you know, with the glass windows or where you have your sign. That is not approved parking. And people, one, two, sometimes three vehicles were parked there and it blocked the view of the turn. Like, that's a major intersection and you couldn't see around the turns. It was really dangerous. And so there should be no parking in front of the building, ever.
Which raises the next point. The way, the way we approve you for a special permit is we sign a site plan, which is another name for a survey. So you have a survey from when you bought it. So what you're gonna do is put a block on the survey that, that says this is for a professional office, max five employees. You're gonna show the parking spaces in the rear on the survey. Um, do you see?
You didn't, you didn't have a survey?
Why don't we dig up, why don't you find the, uh, survey from Stagecoach? And get it up to you.
I, I suppose you don't expect that. The EAF, you know, that, that segment.
Yeah, we, there was all that work done once.
Huge piece of work.
Yeah, there, there will be somewhere in the files here. And nothing's changed since then. You should build.
So pull up the old survey and you, you go to the same architect and you ask him to update it with the, um, items that, that we asked to.
Also, you're suggesting that it indicated there's no parking.
And, and I believe even with new, um, development, it was kind of, you know, lots of parking, but I think all parking.
Yeah, no, Stagecoach didn't have approval to have anybody park there.
So you understand people coming south on Madison Road couldn't see east on Route forty-four. So they edged out, edged out, edged out, until they were halfway into Route forty-four. It was really a scary situation for everyone constantly.
Brian doesn't want his Ferrari half parked on the road.
The thought of those kinds of things was what was maybe, this is such, so much better a use of this property than that deli was.
Totally.
That deli was just wrongly, but, but everyone thought that they could go in and grab a soda or coming off of that road and just pull it, they stopped there. It was very disruptive and a little unnerving to people. But a professional office where it's only you and your employees is going to be a nice quiet use of that. I think it's, it's much better.
Construction vehicles.
Okay. You probably won't be able to update that survey in time for July five. Just, I don't think so?
Well.
Want to try?
No, no. I mean, it depends on what we're getting. I don't know. Is there a survey, you know, or is there?
Oh, for Stagecoach?
There definitely is.
Oh, I guarantee you there is. There was a site plan, which is.
There has to be filed on that somewhere.
It wasn't that long ago. Maybe memory of how long ago that would have been?
It's actually longer.
Is that?
Is it?
Tax map number, right?
When was it?
You have a tax map number, you can.
I can't remember, but it was longer.
It says it's been close to two or three years.
Really? Howard, when did we do this?
Something with the parking last, uh, few years back. So there may be a record for you somewhere. The guy who had that did something, they had more parking spaces in the back. There was something with the neighbor involved.
Hey, I have, Kristen, can you pull the file and make a PDF of the site plan? And uh, maybe a, an up-close Xerox of the architect's name and pass it on to Brian?
Okay, okay.
That would be great.
Yeah.
She was pulling the entire file on him.
It's, it's at least twelve years.
No.
No way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I knew I heard.
Because, no, because the previous owner, when the partner's son went to school with my son, so it's, it's been a very long time. Yeah, it's been a long, long time.
So. Yeah, I guess my only concern is the, the configuration of the property now, how it's used. I think that's consistent with whatever we see. I, I mean, I have no idea what the stage coach did.
Oh, work after the survey?
Yeah.
I don't thi, I don't know from driving by there, but.
They may have just added the patio between the parking and the building.
I think they talked to us about
Yeah.
converting part of the pa, parking into patio, didn't they?
Yeah.
That was it. That was, they came to you, they were here about this a while back, as Margaret was saying. So it's probably in the file.
More than two and a half years ago, because I didn't hear.
Whatever we're doing
Yeah.
is, is a lot less.
Exact, that's right.
Than what they were doing in terms of everything, parking.
Yeah.
This is gonna work.
So that's fine. We can, we can. And I don't think.
Okay. So would you like to be on the schedule for a public hearing? Oh, Aaron?
Yes.
Uh, you've got.
Live a discussion there.
You've got the floor.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna get into the comment number two I had about all, you know, the code section three thirteen. You talked a lot about that. Um, you know, about non-residential reverting back um, or discontinuing. It sounds like Jeff is pretty comfortable with just treating this like a special use permit. Um, like the other one was. I'm not gonna, I'm not the decision maker here, so I, you know, I'm not gonna fight that. But I did include some language in there from the code about those issues. Um, let's see. We talked about parking. It's really up to you to waive the requirements. I, I don't think eleven spaces are necessary for a use of, of three employees and occasional guests coming in. Um, and the residential above, I think what you have there now should be fine with this use. Um, there's no site plan, but a survey is up to you and it sounds like you wanna get the Stagecoach file and use that? Fine?
No, we, we will, we will need, uh, a site plan, which is the survey update, updated for precedent.
Okay, so you'll ask, uh, did they use the same?
Is it an update? Yes.
Okay, got it.
Or survey or whoever, whoever did it.
Whoever did Stagecoach, okay.
So do you need, do you need the, the surveyor? Are you asking for him to formally create a new survey or what do you, I, I, I guess, I'm not quite sure.
He's got it in his file. Uh, he can just, uh, take the same survey, legend it to Brian and certify it as of today. It's a pretty easy process. If, if, if the surveyor is accommodating.
Right, that's my.
And if he's, I mean, our local surveyors are very, very good in accommodating.
I, 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 my only concern is I, I know the site plan is normally something that you want. It can be with as well, but.
I, I think in this case, we're gonna, we're gonna be asking for it.
I, I mean, let's see what we can get.
Okay.
And hopefully it helps if we pull the file for you and, and.
Yeah, that's great. That'd be very, thank you.
Okay, last two things. It does need a referral for the county, GML two thirty-nine M. Um, any special permit within five hundred feet of a state road requires it. It's not part of your waiver agreement with the county, so it does need to go to the county. Um, they're required to respond within thirty days. So if you make that referral this week, um, you should probably hear back before the public hearing date. And even if you don't, you can still take action. It's likely a matter of local concern in their eyes. Um, and then lastly, Seeker, it is type two. It's gonna be, um, six seventeen point five C eighteen, which specifically says reuse of a residential or commercial structure or of a structure containing mixed residential and commercial uses where the residential or commercial use is a permitted use under the applicable zoning law, including permitted by special use permit. It's pretty clear. But this is type two. Um, yeah, so I think referring to the county, setting a, a public hearing for next meeting and classifying as type two are all appropriate for tonight.
Okay, Aaron, what motions do we need tonight?
I'll rattle them off and somebody can say so moved and seconded.
Exactly, thank you.
Be a motion to classify this as a type-two action to refer to the planning instead of a public hearing for a lot of that.
Okay. Susan and Nicole, uh, moved and seconded on everything. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's good. Uh, good luck, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
And uh.
In a month.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see you, we'll see you back. Uh, no, you, you'll see Nicole and her team back.
If you're deep, maybe reference a, um, a map or file. I can check. I can, I can, I can go online and check it, see it.
Kristen, are you familiar with the two thirty-nine M form for the county?
Uh, no, I am not.
Okay. I had emailed it to the group the other day.
Okay.
It's basically, you fill that form out, um, you basically attach a copy of the application that we've received. Um, you could send it to them online through their, I think they have a online system that they accept these with. I can look into that for you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, Aaron.
Your, your file would show a prior county approval for the prior use. I don't know. Your file would show a prior county approval for the prior use. I don't know if that's useful to include that, so. Okay. Say, have we any other items that we need to go over?
Just going back to something that I brought up at the last meeting about following our processes. I love that we got the agenda in advance of the meeting. I love that we got the minutes. I think it was all really great. But I think one thing that we might have left out is that we didn't post the agenda in advance of the meeting for the public.
I did. I posted it last week.
Because I couldn't find it either.
What you do is you go on the homepage, you go to right now, it's agendas and minutes, so that'll change once we straighten out. Then you scroll down to planning board, click on that.
Because
And then there's a planning board agendas.
Okay, because I, okay, because I just went through boards, planning board, and there's also a folder there that says planning board agendas.
Yeah, that's
And there's nothing in it.
Yeah, you have to start out with agendas and minutes.
Can we get rid of that other area then, so that, because community members are looking for it and they can't find it, and I'm a board member and I can't find it because I go to my board and I'm looking for, under my board, documents that are published, and it's not there. So I think we should make it easier for the public and for volunteers to access the information that's needed.
That's what we're working on.
But could we just delete that, those folders out from under the planning board so that there aren't two folders that say planning board agendas?
I don't know. That would be a question for Mary. She could ask Diana, who is the website person right now.
Could you work on that before the next meeting? Could that be something that just because if there's two folders named the same thing in two different areas, people are gonna go there and say, well, you didn't do your job. You didn't do your job. You didn't post in advance. The public can be aware of what items are being heard in case they want to attend.
So they may have a website consultant, they may have some modifications or edits to the website that they have to do.
Right. I'd like to see that kind of
No, it's important. Technically, a dead link like that means that it's not posted.
Right.
There's a bunch of things like that.
That's right.
Last night, we recognized we need to do a big overhaul and kind of figure out
Right.
what's the best flow and what's the easiest way to post and what's the easiest way to have headings and all that stuff. So it might, it might take a little bit of time, but it's certainly something that
In the interim, though, if it takes five minutes to delete some of the folders that are just empty, sitting there. Because I went to look too, and I said, sure enough, you're right. It's not posted. So
If you go in the search box as well and just put, to get your link for it, it will bring up all those items.
All those folders that say planning board agenda?
Well
And then you sift through.
Do you want to do agenda and the date?
Okay. I just think we should make it easier for our residents.
It needs to be easier. I thought we could put that box on the front page so that
And cleaner.
Find it on the other page, so it's getting easier, and I've been talking to Mary and
Okay. Yeah, I know. We're making good progress towards this, but
You can't get rid of the folders and post the agenda there.
And in the interim, the residents are still frustrated and
You could post it twice.
And Kristen, I know
That's funny.
When I do the CIB agenda, I always post it with the link and everything at the same time, so that it's like right on the homepage. So that people see it on the front page.
See it.
No, no, not the new, not the new document, with the actual announcement of the meeting presumably and the agenda all in one spot, so that you can find it on that homepage, and then once the meeting's done, it's deleted.
Yeah, that is
Yeah, you can, you can decide when you, the date you want it posted and the date you want it to be taken off when you're setting it up.
So, so the people who are in charge of each division now, whether it's the planning board, the EBA, whoever, which I get this wrong, can decide how
Sorry, guys, refresh the standards open. I keep going.
This is left here for everybody.
Either we delete that one folder just now, if it takes five minutes, to delete a folder, or we just post it in both places if we're gonna keep it the way it is until we get the overhaul. But I think that'll be helpful. That's my only, not my only
Hey, we got it, we got a creep. Oh, thank you. Whose birthday was it?
This was just from last
Oh, last night. Okay, do we have any other thoughts, comments, suggestions? Alrighty. Yeah. It was unanimous that you go home. Okay.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks all. Thank you. Thanks for helping me out.